...a meeting of the school committee for October 6th, calling the meeting to order. Would you please join me in our pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The mission of the Danvers Public Schools: Creating a supportive environment where all learners thrive. This meeting is being broadcast on Danvers Community Access Television. Is there anyone recording these proceedings as well? Who do you represent? Thank you. Items of interest to Superintendent School Committee, community statement. Jim, would you like to start us off? Jim? Thank you, Jim. Please state your name, your address. And just so you know, we may have a few people speaking tonight. You will be held to three minutes. I'll let you know, try to give you a warning. And, Floris Johnson. Yeah, push the middle button.
Hello. My name's Jim Moros and a town meeting member, precinct three, and a concerned citizen among many other of my community involvements. I have a few issues I'd like to address tonight, three of them. Number one, I and numerous other Danvers residents are deeply troubled by reports that the Massachusetts Teachers Association has advised school departments not to take any disciplinary action against educators who publicly celebrated or condoned the tragic assassination of Charlie Kirk. Whether through social media posts or classroom discussions, such conduct, if true, is wholly inappropriate and reflects a troubling disregard for basic human decency and professional standards. Thank you. Number two, and this is for any Danvers High School students and their parents who wish to learn more about Charlie Kirk's Turning Point USA student organizations or may be interested in starting a Turning Point USA club in Danvers at the Danvers High or Danvers Middle School, please visit that website. It's www.clubamerica, all one word, dot com for more information. I would also be happy to discuss this with anyone further if they would like to. My contact information again is available at the town hall, well, on the website. I'm a town meeting member. Just look at the list, my email and phone number are there. And I'm also a member of the Republican Committee. We talk about these issues, so if you, our meeting is the third Wednesday of every month, the next meeting is October 15th, so if you want to come and talk about a TPA club, we'll put you on top of the agenda. Come on down. And third and final, several years ago, we did try to, there was an effort, some of us tried to help some interested students establish a TPA, TPA USA club in Danvers. However, some of the students expressed fear of being ostracized or ridiculed for wholly conservative views. I understand that there are ongoing discussions surrounding certain DEI, diversity, equity, inclusion, and CRT, critical race theory curriculum topics. Often, the issue is not about book censorship, but rather about age appropriateness and developmental considerations. In reviewing statements from the Danvers Equity and Inclusion Collaborative, I noted one quote from the American Library Association. The American Library Association is committed to, I'll quote that, "The American Library Association is committed to upholding our core values, which include equitable access to knowledge, social justice, and intellectual freedom." I wholeheartedly agree, and I hope that the same principle of intellectual freedom extends to Danvers students who are interested in starting a Turning Point USA club in this town. My sincere wish is that we can all foster open, respectful dialogue about both the intellectual freedom and the age appropriateness of education material and curriculum. Thank you.
Jimmy, forgot your sign. Mr. Moros, forgot your sign? Yep, no worries. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. I am not here to speak on the issue that I think the majority of people are here to, but I want to speak on special education while I have everyone's attention. So, as you know, I'm Julie Bolduc de Filippo. I'm the chair of the Danvers CPAC. I am coming to speak tonight, just to give you all an update as usual, but also to speak to a few items of interest to this committee that were put on the agenda and that have a unique impact on students with disabilities in this district and across Massachusetts. First, I want to begin to talk about the accomplishments we've had recently and begin to acknowledge those accomplishments, and we should have some, be very proud of them. There are meaningful areas of strength in how this district supports students with disabilities that we can visibly see now, not just in the classroom. I think one of the best ways that that was showcased is last week during the Unified Basketball Game held at Danvers High School. It was an incredible example of inclusion in action. The positive response we received from families, students, and even other school districts showed that this is the kind of community Danvers wants to be. We also saw encouraging signs in DESI's 2025 Accountability Data that was recently released. While MCAS isn't the full picture, it's one of the ways districts are measured and the results matter. Students with disabilities in Danvers achieved a scaled mass score of 481.3, placing the district ahead of many other districts in this region. In high, in high school math, their growth percentage was 54.3, which DESI classifies as typical growth to very high growth. These are gains that are not trivial. They affirm that when supports align with curriculum that is responsive and resources are committed, students with disabilities can and do make measurable progress. The expanded investments the town has made in special education in recent years are already having an impact, and that's something that we should all be very proud of. At the same time, it is important to consider how we might leverage the success to overcome some of the challenges students and disabilities face that this year's accountability data represent as well. In Danvers, chronic absenteeism among students with disabilities is nearly double of their peers. In grades one through eight, about 20% of students with disabilities are chronically absent compared to just 12% in their peers. In high school, 39.5% of students with disabilities are categorized as chronically absent by DESI compared to just 22.2% of their peers. When more than one in three high school students with disabilities are missing significant instruction time, it's not surprising that some of the key indicators show that we're lagging behind. In attendance is not simply a data point. It is a mirror of school climate, belonging, safety, and student well-being. And I understand that these are nuanced, interdependent states of being, each with a direct impact on academic achievement.
Julie, you wrapped the three minutes. Could you wrap that up very quickly?
Sure. I just wanted to say that I hope, as you consider the audit report tonight that will be presented to you, as well as the accountability data, that you think about how this uniquely impacts students with disabilities, and I can submit my statement to the committee to review further.
That would be great. Thank you so much. Just state your name and where you live.
Sure. Guy in Oreo.
Mr. Norio.
Precinct seven or eight, I think, seven? So, I'm here today to talk about a few things. I'll keep it brief. The first thing is under your, the student handbook or the Danvers handbook, under file IJ-R, reconsideration of instructional resources. Okay? And this comes up with the book that we have been teaching our children, All American Boys, and this is going to be under your, your topic of profanity and obscenity. Okay? So, in this book, which has been banned over most of the nation over the last few years, this has been chosen, and in this book, there's over 200 swears in this book, and I can't say those swears here because you'd probably yell at me. But our children are learning those. They can read it, they're writing it, they're writing it. If there's an SH in the front of the word, they have an exclamation point to do the I, and then a T. So, they're learning how to write the swears in a sort of interesting way. And there's some other language there, too. Also in this book, glorifying underage binge drinking, shotgunning 10 beers. My son Dominic came home and said, "But Bob, what does that mean?" That was a great conversation I had to have with my 13-year-old son. Drug use, "What is crack?", he said. They talk about use of crack in this book. And then also finally, in this book, we have an adult who beats up a child. That is the book that is inside our ELA class at Danvers Public Schools in eighth grade. So, I will be submitting this to Superintendent Bauer for you guys to review and go through that, and I look forward to your answers to that. Next, for this curriculum development, in your handbook also, it states, "Constant adaptation and development of the curriculum is necessary if the district is to meet the needs of the students in its schools. To be successful, curriculum development must be collaborative enterprise involving staff, administrators, utilizing professional expertise, gathering input from parents and community." Unfortunately, that wasn't done in this particular instance. I had a meeting with Superintendent Bauer, the assistant superintendent, and curriculum director last week, I'm sure most of you know, and I asked the question, "Who reviewed the curriculum?" And Mr. Demorrow, I appreciate his honesty, he said, "Guy, this was under me. I did not review the curriculum." And there was an eight-page lesson plan that came out on white privilege, and basically came out and saying, "That shouldn't have been released. We should have done a better job at reviewing the lesson planning so we can come out and take things out." So, kudos to him, because he came out, he was honest, I thought that was great to see. But it did slip through the cracks, and now we have this big uproar.
Guy, your time's up. Could you wrap that up?
I can, yeah. Thank you for reminding me of that. So, to wrap up, I do not, I know there's, the teachers are here. I do not blame the teachers one iota. I think they're in a very tough spot. I think that they come into this to teach the children, and they do a great job, all from K to 12. Okay? I think where this needs to be most focused on is the curriculum planning. What goes into the curriculum? Who gets to vet it even further? What is age appropriate, what is necessary, and how we can be better? So, in the information that's going to come out tonight, how we can grow Danvers High School to have more attendees, because in the last 10 years, we're down 27% in enrollment. And I personally believe, and I think a lot of people in this town believe, that because of the choices of curriculum, Danvers is losing students.
Thank you for that.
So, I appreciate your time. Thank you for it.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening. My name is Sarah Stone. I am a seventh-grade ELA teacher here at Holton Richmond, and I'm also the English teacher leader at Holton Richmond. And I'm here delivering a letter that the Danvers Teachers Association collectively wrote, and I'm going to share it with you tonight. I can't promise it'll be under the three minutes, but I'm going to do my best. As an English teacher, it's hard sometimes. So, the letter begins with a quote from Jason Reynolds, one of the co-authors of All American Boys. Specifically, for a lot of us, it doesn't always feel like you're banning the book itself. Sometimes it feels like you're banning the people that those books are about, that you're saying that those lives are lives that should only exist in the shadows. Danvers School Committee and school leaders, we are writing to you today to express our grave concerns regarding objections to the first ELA unit of the school year. By objecting to the book All American Boys, an acclaimed novel by Jason Reynolds and Brendan Kylie, some within the Danvers community are expecting the district to censure this book and are denying their children the opportunity to attend ELA class alongside their peers. We would like to make clear that this letter is a defense of intellectual freedom and teacher autonomy, not a reflection of the work of our administration. We will continue to work with the district to follow guidelines established by the American Library Association regarding intellectual freedom, the right of every individual to both seek and receive information from all points of view without restriction. The National Council of Teachers of English echoes these sentiments. Schools cannot restrict student access to books in the classroom or library unless it's for educational or compelling safety reasons. Schools should follow established district policies when reviewing requests to restrict or remove books from classrooms or libraries. As teachers, we are concerned that our expertise, knowledge, and the established process that guides book choices and instructional decision-making are being questioned. In fact, just over a year ago, the Danvers Teachers Association negotiated academic freedom in our contract, which specifically outlines following and implementing educational policies. The contract reads, "The parties further recognize the respective responsibilities of the administration and teachers in the formulation and classroom implementation of the school district's educational policies. Further, the contract explicitly states, 'A teacher's appropriate exercise of discretion shall be respected within established guidelines, including but not limited to performance evaluation standards, school district policies, district-determined curricula, and assessments in state standards, and with consideration for student ages, grade levels, and developmental stages, and best practices in determining the substance, organization, and presentation of lessons and courses.' Our current circumstance is deeply troubling. This is not the first time Danvers has grappled with the threat of censorship in our ELA classrooms. Several years ago, we collectively spoke out against the pause the district placed upon teachers as we prepared to use stamp for kids as a vehicle for critical thinking and rigorous discussion with our students. After a thorough examination of the facts in the text by history teachers, we proceeded to use the book in our classes. We are proud to be a part of a school community in Massachusetts. This commonwealth is a pillar of progress in academia, of civility, and service. The Massachusetts Curriculum Frameworks declares, 'The purpose of teaching literature is not only to sharpen skills of comprehension and analysis, but also to instill in students a deep appreciation for art, beauty, and truth, while broadening their understanding of the human condition from differing points of view. Reading and discussing important works of prose and poetry will also help students develop empathy for others while learning about who they are as individuals and members of a wider civilization and world.' We stand by these statements, we stand with our students, we stand for social justice, and we are not alone. The ALA and NCTE clearly and concisely condemn challenges placed on instructional materials such as the one we are currently facing in Danvers. We feel that it is crucial to address such challenges. The American Library Association is committed to upholding our core values, which include equitable access to knowledge, social justice, and intellectual freedom. As members of a profession committed to free and equitable access to information in the pursuit of truth, we stand firm in opposing any effort to suppress knowledge, to label controversial views, or dictate what is orthodox in history, politics, or belief."
Sarah, we almost did.
I'm almost there. Children in Danvers deserve honesty, and it is our duty as their teachers to help them think critically. Silencing the reality viewpoints and perspectives of the Black American experience and story is not teaching from a place of truth. We simply should not reject stories that are uncomfortable or difficult to understand when they are the lived experience of people who are different from ourselves. We are very worried that the current challenge against a book selected by teachers and curriculum leaders through a curriculum exploration process could take away the power of teacher autonomy and trust from experienced educators. What stops a parent from rejecting the next book in the curriculum for a new reason? We must ask, what books will be left for our critical thought and rigorous learning if we pull every text that requires students to grapple with complex or uncomfortable situations? We feel as though upholding our responsibility as teachers and defenders of intellectual freedom requires us to speak up when texts are challenged in our community. We are living in a moment that has tremendous potential for positive growth. We need to be brave, willing to evolve, and most importantly, we must have the hard, messy, essential conversations our kids deserve. We are trained to have those conversations. They are courageous, and we're trained to do it. These are the reasons we are in this profession. We believe that our kids are the ones who will lead us into a more hopeful future. It is our responsibility to facilitate their learning. An essential part of learning is analyzing, discussing, and considering diverse perspectives. We believe our administration and our greater school community wants to collaborate and work together to provide students with a rich exposure to literature, specifically diverse texts, and a sense of belonging. On the Danvers Public School website, the administration has committed to these ideals. The Danvers Public Schools is committed to addressing issues of race and equity. We strive to make sure that our students feel safe, cared for, and heard as they navigate our complex world. We believe it is vitally important for us to support our community as we face social justice issues together. We are standing at a crossroads. Option A is to have faculty teach with books that we select based upon curricular review, our expertise, and the developmental needs of our students. Option B is to pretend that some of the most pressing and relevant issues of our time simply don't exist, and to fail in giving our students the experiences and tools they need to think critically in an increasingly complex world. Only one of these options sounds like a reasonable path for our school community. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Thank you all. Is there anyone else? Just your name and address, please.
Hi, Suzanne Wright, Reeve Rattlesburg. My name is Suzanne. Of course I can. Hi, Mr. Moros. My name is Suzanne. My son is in sixth grade at the middle school. I've read the book. This book is written in two perspectives, one incident and the choices and actions each character make. The subjects of racism, violence, bias, and privilege are really uncomfortable topics. This isn't a light, fun, beach read where everyone lives happily ever after. This book makes students think critically. It fosters empathy for others, as in, "Do unto others as you would have done unto you." It teaches them to assess situations, assess facts, and to understand how all of us have a lens through which we view situations that is shaped by our own experiences and biases. Most of us will never have the experience that Rashad has in this book, and it's okay to acknowledge that others do face this type of racism and prejudice. It fosters that discussion, "What would you do if you saw this? What would you do differently? What would you do if you were Rashad? What would have been different if Rashad was white?" If you haven't already seen it, there's a really good YouTube video, if you search, it's called "Life of Privilege Explained in $100 Race." All the students line up, everyone equally on a line, and there's a chance to win $100. But first, they're told to take two steps forward if they have any of the following: two parents at home, a father figure at home, access to an education, access to tutors, if you've never had to worry about where your next meal might come from, if you've never had to help your parents pay the bills. You get the point. Suddenly, the race isn't so fair anymore. Those students who are now yards ahead in the race didn't earn that advantage. They aren't more worthy, they aren't more talented than those that were left behind, but they do have the advantage to win that $100. That's privilege. It exists. It's a difficult concept for some, but turning our eye away from it isn't, isn't the good way to go. I don't have to worry about my son having the experience that Rashad had. He's not going to be beaten or arrested in a traffic stop, but others don't get that privilege because of the color of their skin is different, like Rashad. Let's talk about that with our kids. Let's just discuss how lucky our kids are, living in a town like Danvers, with safe streets, and food in their bellies, and all the privilege that they have, and trained police officers as well. The language used is the language that teens use. It puts the reader in the moment and becomes relatable. A teen doesn't want to read a book or relate to a book written by a 50-year-old who uses words like "gosh golly" and "Gee willikers." This is the language of their time. It wasn't for us, and that's okay. Things change. No one's asking you or your child to change their mind or political beliefs, just to think critically, to be able to discuss topics and facts with a firm moral compass. We can't raise our kids in a bubble of fairy tales and romance novels and expect them to thrive in the real world, expect them to act with morality and empathy and dignity if we don't challenge them and teach them those skills. Opting out teaches them that they can walk away from anything uncomfortable or hard. That isn't an option in adulthood. No one offers you a month-long library pass when life gets hard, but God knows, I would really love that. I will leave you with this, "But if anyone has the world's good and sees his brother in need and yet closes his heart against him, how does God's love abide in him? Little children, let us not love in word or talk, but in deed and in truth." That's from John, chapter three, verse 17, 18. Let's give them the tools to act and to love and to be good human beings. Thank you.
Thank you. I would expect nothing less.
Well, good afternoon, good evening.
Good evening.
I was a little late because I expected this meeting to start at seven, but I guess you start at six, 6:30. And one of my first questions was, and I printed out your agenda, and I'm very happy to hear what's going on here this evening, but I'm looking at item number two, items of interest to Superintendent and School Committee. Where's the public? That's been lost in the last few agendas. So, I'm just happy to be here, and I appreciate your time. My issue has been, and this is a combination of issues because I've been reporting this on my show for a couple of years now, instead of stamping out inequities, DEI, SEL, CRT, and LGBT create new issues and further inequities in our system. The current crop of students and parents are enrolling their children in out-of-school programs, whether they're going to private school, they're going to St. John's Prep, expensive, but that's what they choose to do. They go to Essex Tech because we have been chasing that issue as well. Now, when people contribute to the widening performance among all levels, because our attention is focused on the four or five different issues that have been presented in our school system. Now, I'm speaking from a standpoint of a grandfather, and my daughters have gone through 30 years ago. So, I'm looking out for the young ones. Now, Danvers Schools, there's a parent that wrote to me and said, "More technical and rigorous curriculum would bring more people back to the school system that we have in place." My contention has been over the last four or five years that this is not a Danvers school system, this is a state of Massachusetts school system. The thing is, we are under the perception that we have controls over what's being taught in our school system. I don't see it. I have in the back of my truck probably a pile of paper about this high. About two years ago, I asked for the curriculum that is dictated by the state to our education department here in Danvers, and that's what we follow. So, the English especially as a second language, to make sure that kids learn properly, the majority of students, 92%, are being cast aside, and I, you know, I use that term loosely, as I have in the past, for the 8% to 10% who deserve special treatment, special education, and that's something that we talked about in the past. The only way to eliminate the DEI, SEL, CRT, LGBTQ, and all of the other books that we've seen in here is, the only way is to stop letting the equity industrial complex of consultants. And I'll bet you the books that were chosen, that were discussed tonight, were chosen not by the teachers, but by a consultant from the book company.
Mark, you're at your time. Could you close that up, please?
I have two paragraphs. Equity is a noble goal if it means ensuring that every student has the same opportunity and educational support, but it should not come at the expense of high achievers, nor should the lower expectations, it's to lower expectations and outcomes for the kids, kind of students that qualify, that equity advocates claim to champion. It will take more than updating the curriculum for Danvers to regain the trust of families that are cleaning the system. It will take renouncing bad ideas that damaged it in the first place. And the thing is that we're not willing to do any of that. We're willing to continue with the past, and we are sort of learning. We're willing to continue with the past, and we are sort of learning along the way. And I've had discussions with the superintendent and the school committee people, and I hope you're gaining something out of this because Danvers is not Danvers education system. It's a state education system. Thank you.
Thanks, Mark. Mr. Sherman.
Mr. Bauer, School Committee, hello?
Just state your name and where you live, please.
Sure. My name is Andrea Sherman. I live at 1 Stafford Road. And I come to you tonight first as a parent of an eighth grader and a 10th grader, but also I am a former English teacher, I'm the president of the Beverly Teachers Association, and an overall supporter of public education. I'm here to speak in strong support of the Danvers teachers and their professional choice to include All American Boys in the eighth-grade curriculum. Recently, as we know, this book has been challenged, and while I respect every family's right to engage in their child's education, I do not believe we should allow discomfort to dictate curriculum. Discomfort is not harm. In fact, avoiding that which makes us uncomfortable does our students a great disservice. All American Boys is award-winning, age-appropriate, and it addresses issues of race, identity, justice, and empathy, issues that are not hypothetical or distant. They are real, they are present, and they are exactly the kinds of topics that our kids are already engaging with in their lives, especially in a digital world where nothing is filtered and everything is accessible. Yes, the book contains violence and profanity, so do the works of Shakespeare, but they are not included for shock value, they are authentic, they reflect the lived experiences of many young people. And in the hands of trained educators that you have in Danvers, this book becomes a powerful tool, one that guides students through difficult conversations. Danvers classrooms must remain spaces where students can safely explore complex topics. That is the point of education. Almost every text has a conflict. We can't choose to shy away from some and not others. If our community is uncomfortable with racism and violence, but not the atrocities of the Holocaust at night, or the famine in a long walk to water, then we are bending to the wrong pressure. We should not be censoring classroom texts. If anything, we should be supporting our educators in the incredibly difficult work that they do, day in and day out, bringing context, compassion, and critical thinking to our schools. When we allow students to opt out of vetted, meaningful texts because they are uncomfortable, we send the message that hard truths should be avoided, and that is not the message Danvers schools should send. I would be remiss if I didn't take a moment to acknowledge the speakers before me referencing students leaving Danvers to attend private schools. I'm not sure if the community is aware that St. John's Prep, a highly respected private school in this town, selected All American Boys as a community read way back in 2018. Both of the authors were invited to the school to speak. The book is still taught there today. This is not a fringe title. So I say this: support our teachers, trust their professional judgment, support the parents who are asking questions, not with fear but with curiosity and a willingness to learn, and most importantly, support our students by allowing them to engage with literature that reflects the world they are inheriting. If our school community can't stand behind the teachers on the front lines, those who are confronting all of the isms in society, using literature to help students make sense of it, we will fail our kids. Please don't shy away from this discomfort. The only way forward is through it. Your teachers jumped. Catch them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Please let us know who you are and where you live.
Absolutely. My name is Deb Geswaldo. I live at 34 Abington Road. I had not intended on speaking tonight, but as I was listening, those who know me probably knew I could not keep my mouth shut. I am obviously a Danvers resident. I am also a public school educator and president of Malden Education Association. I chose to live in Danvers because of things like the really good public schools. I don't have children, not because I don't want them, but because of health issues. But I chose to live somewhere where the property taxes certainly aren't low, because I wanted to live somewhere where the children in the community have access to really good public school services, and that is what Danvers does. But as I'm sitting here and listening, I think it's really important to recognize a lot of what several people said before me. The reality of life is that it's not all peaches and cream. It's not. I can tell you that from having taught in Malden since 2004, where there are children who come from all different places, all different backgrounds, kids who are war refugees, kids who really struggle socio-economically, kids who struggle with the issues of racism in the community and in the country. You can't erase racism, it exists. You can't erase classism, it exists. You cannot erase LGBTQ+ people, they exist. I exist. By ignoring things, it makes life incredibly more difficult for our young people who are being raised in times that are so much more difficult than even when I was young in the 80s and 90s. I feel like a dinosaur now in comparison to them. Times have really changed. We have to read the difficult texts, we have to discuss the difficult texts, and teach our children how to have those conversations, because if we don't, nothing in our society ever changes, nothing ever gets better. We don't teach young people how to have empathy, compassion, and dignity for themselves and for other people. It is how we teach our young people to be able to not just survive, but to thrive in an increasingly complex and interdependent world.
Thank you, Deb.
Hi. I wasn't going to talk either. I can't help myself. I'm Ellen Graham. I live on Lyndale Street. I've been here my whole life. I think the conversation here clearly tells us that the book that was chosen makes us critically think, makes us get out of our own environment. I think that's exactly what the kids need. More importantly, I'm very familiar with our other speaker, Mark, which I know I must speak through here. I think the idea that we had a speaker stand up, and I understand you missed the beginning, that talked about people with different abilities, and how much gain we've made in our school system on how we have taught them, how we teach people with different challenges. Equity is important. Diversity is important. You guys have done a good job. Danvers is a Danvers school system. I went through the Danvers school system, my children have gone through the Danvers school systems. We're not perfect, we all have our issues, but if we all talk about it and come together, when my kids went through the school, I read all the books they read, and then we took that opportunity to discuss it, if they wanted to, they didn't always want to. But that's the whole idea of critical thinking. We can't hide from it, and we also have to acknowledge that white privilege is real. I'm privileged to have been in Danvers my whole life. We used to call it the bubble. My kids, I get to bring my kids up here in Danvers, they're very lucky, but we don't understand the diversity. Danvers is not that diverse. I grew up, Danvers was very racist. People get upset when I mention it. I heard the N-word more than once. I grew up surrounded by conservative Christians, my own family, my neighborhood. We didn't know any different. Now, we have the privilege of learning, understanding, having books like this that we could understand other points of view and perspectives. Before you leave, Danvers, I mean, didn't find out till I went to UMass Amherst, and boy, was that more diverse. That's, you know, we need to teach our children to critically think. You can read it, you can disagree with the book, you can not agree with the different perspectives your teachers have, you can agree with your parents, but you have to be able to know how to critically think to get around in this world. And we need to embrace our diversity, our equity, and our inclusion. Don't be afraid of it. I'm tired of people not wanting to say the words because they're bad words. They are not. They're what make this country great. Thank you.
Thanks, Ellen. Anybody else?
Hi, good evening. I'm a new Danvers resident. My name is Christine Parker. I live on McDermott Farm Road. Did not plan on speaking tonight. I came in support of the teachers' union. A lot of folks might not agree with this statement, but there's fascism going on outside today in our country, and it's scary. It's scary to me, it's scary what future my daughter's going to have in this country and in this town specifically. And fascism is going to win when they tell us whose history we can learn and whose history we can't learn, what we can talk about and what we can't talk about. And if we stop talking about white privilege, to address what one of the gentlemen said earlier, what's next? Are we going to stop talking about the genocide and slavery that this country was built on? I want my daughter to be supported by Danvers School, right? Not to have voices shut down. It's a very slippery slope, and I really hope for the sake of our kids that we're not going to go down it. And just one more point that I'd like to make, I would, my daughter's in the first grade here in town, public school. When she's of age, I would much rather have her read the words of All American Boys than the words of Charlie Kirk.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Could you just, your name?
Yep, Carrie Callahan, and I live on North Shore Ave.
Thank you.
Sure. Thank you for the opportunity to speak in support of the book, All American Boys. I attended my children's curriculum night in September and was impressed with the book selection our kids would be reading prior to entering high school. I felt it would give them an opportunity to expand their thinking, learn about history, and open their eyes to sometimes harsh realities of what people face on a daily basis. I heard there were concerns raised about the book, and I took the opportunity to read it myself. The night I started, I had a hard time putting it down. I was immediately invested in the characters and how the story was unfolding. Yes, there is swearing, and a couple of references to drugs, however, nothing that stuck out to me as egregious. My recommendation is for those who opted out of the book and have not yet read it, read it alongside your student. There is a pretty significant plot twist. I don't want to give it away, I almost did to my own kids. You'll be surprised by the turn of events in how the book ends. All American Boys opens the eyes and allows for discussion around the biases from all cultures and backgrounds. It gives our children the opportunity to look through other lenses, have empathy, and ask questions before reacting in haste. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
My name's Alyssa Devlin. I live on Ipswich River Road here in Danvers, and I don't really have anything prepared to say. I was just coming to here to be in support of the Danvers Teachers Association and in support of including this book in the curriculum for the eighth graders. My son is an eighth grader here at the middle school, and I asked him about the book and what his feelings are on it thus far, and he's really enjoying the book, and he thinks it's really, like, well-written, and it's a great story, which is a lot, because he does enjoy reading, but he hasn't really been super-interested, you know, on his own. And so for him to have that much of a review about the book really impressed me and made me think it's probably pretty good. I am planning to read it myself, I haven't yet. So I just wanted to share that with you, so from the perspective of a student, he actually wanted to be here tonight too, to speak on behalf of the book, but he had another commitment. But I just want to share that with you, that, you know, that that is some of the feedback from him and some of his friends that I've spoken with as well. They're just really enjoying the book and they think it's important. And I also want to say that having the sort of a book in the curriculum really seems to be in line with what we've been talking about at the superintendent council meetings, about what the vision for Danvers Public Schools is, to teach critical thinking and to encourage critical thinking and empathy and, you know, strong children, and this is the kind of book that will help to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, I'm going to close this portion of the meeting.
Comment from the school committee?
Yeah.
All right, this is part of the comment piece. I wrote all this down so I don't mess this up and I don't get misquoted, but I was very interested by several emails that I received specifically about this book in anticipation of what was going to happen tonight, so I thought I'd put a little statement together and just share my thoughts on this. Most importantly, for those who are not in favor of the book, I hope at least you took the time to read it and to really understand what you're against. If you haven't, I'm happy to share a quick summary of the book and some additional thoughts, and I think I'll hurt some feelings on both sides. I've spent just the last week reading and listening, because I was on a flight, so I thought it'd be easier to do the audiobook for American Boys in full, every single chapter. Before I go further, I want to be clear about where I'm coming from. I'm a parent, my kids are in the Danvers schools, my daughter is in the middle school. For those of you who remember, I was introduced to this community and eventually elected to this committee because of an incident right here in our district that forced all of us to reflect on who we are and what we value. And I also have close friends in law enforcement, a few of whom are here today, and I've seen firsthand the dedication and sacrifice they bring to their work. So I'm not anti-police, and nothing I'm saying tonight should be taken that way. As a school committee member, my role is not to write or approve curriculum. My job is to listen, to represent the community, and to make sure what happens in our schools reflects our shared values of fairness, respect, and balance. What this conversation really comes down to for me is balance, how we teach, not whether we teach, because books like All American Boys are not dangerous, and it's not propaganda. Experiences, conversations, and how we treat one another shape our kids far more than any single story or lesson ever could. One of the things this book does best is to present two very different young men, both trying to make sense of the world around them. One comes from a single-parent home. He's loyal, he's flawed, he's trying to do the right thing, but he's navigating a world without much guidance. The other has a strong two-parent household. His father is a former soldier and police officer who once made a life-altering mistake on the job. I may ruin the plot, but I'm going to say it anyway. The father was in an incident that left another young man paralyzed, and that experience hardened him. He believes that nothing bad happens to you if you keep your head down, follow orders, and don't question authority. Now, if I stopped right there and didn't mention race, most people would assume the first story of the single parenthood teen was the black teenager, and the second teenager was white. I'm out of order here, sorry, but it's the opposite. And that's the genius of this book. It flips our assumptions upside down. It challenges us to examine the quiet biases we might not even know we carry. That's valuable. That's education. In my opinion, where I do have concerns is with the curriculum that was presented alongside this book, and please hear me out. It's specifically the use of the phrase "white privilege." In my opinion, that term has been weaponized. What may have started as a way to explain inequality has become a flashpoint that shuts down conversations instead of opening them up. It's not that the topic itself shouldn't be discussed, it's that I think we can do it a lot better. We can talk about fairness, opportunity, and empathy without using words that divide people before the discussion even starts. For me, it's just like the Thin Blue Line flag. It began as a sign of support for law enforcement, but later became politicized. The term "white privilege" has taken on that same energy. It creates walls where we need bridges. I believe our teachers and our students deserve a better framework. We don't need labels to talk about justice, we don't need buzzwords to talk about respect, and we don't need to choose between supporting our police officers and teaching our kids about fairness and empathy. We can absolutely do both. I also want to acknowledge our teachers and their commitment to academic freedom. You have to know that no books have been banned or censored in Danvers. All American Boys remains available in classrooms and libraries and is being read by nearly all eighth graders, I think roughly 95% of them. The limited opt-out option was a short-term accommodation for a few families, not a change in policy, as we work to balance academic freedom with parental choice, which I know is a kind of a sticky word too, but I say it. In Danvers, we've already seen what happens when difficult issues aren't addressed early. It hurts our kids, and it hurts our community. So let's not avoid the hard conversations, but let's approach them with care, respect, and balance. Let's believe our students are capable of understanding complexity without being divided by the language we use. Opting out might Opting out might feel like protection, but engaging thoughtfully and respectfully is preparation. And I think we can all agree that what we want for every student who leaves Danvers is preparation to think critically, act compassionately, and navigate a world full of difference with confidence and respect. Thank you.
Thanks, Gabe.
Mr. Crane?
First of all, Gabe, brilliant. I like everything you said there, and I think you made great points. I don't have anywhere near as much to say, and I probably won't say it as articulately. But I would tell you this. First thing sort of jumped to mind as to what my perspective on this type of issue is. And the first thing is that our teachers are professionals, and they aren't choosing books or advocating for books that in any way they are going to think would be harmful to kids. We have developed this inability to trust expertise now, and we're seeing it in all sorts of areas of our life, and it's not doing us any good. So the first thing is I trust our teachers when it comes to their viewpoints here. The second is that I'm a big believer that in most cases, if someone tells you not to read a book, it's probably the first book you should go find. And that's not my idea. That actually is paraphrasing something Dwight Eisenhower said. "Don't give into the book burners. Read every book in the library." And I agree with that. I don't think there are any ideas that we need to be afraid of. Things need to be taught certainly in an age-appropriate way. But the point of education is to teach and learn how to think critically and to consider ideas that might be different from the ideas you walk in with. My own experience as a parent was, from an early age, I tried to talk to my kids in a way they would understand about the way the real world is. And that's just me. I think it's the way to go. And I think most parents have some... Have a lot of faith in your kids. That's part of what this comes down to. You can trust them not to be influenced to go in a bad direction because they read a book. You can trust them to sort of work through the issues and think about them. At the end of the day, you're gonna get... I think you ultimately are gonna have children you can really be proud of. So anyway, that's it. Thank you.
You good?
So since the two gentlemen on either side of me, you know, pretty much hit all the points I would've hit with me having just a little bit more. I've worked in schools for 28 years. Of those 28 years, 20 of them have been in a city district. I also coach high school sports, middle school sports. And the way that this book is written... Yes, I read it. Do I have time to read it? No, but I did, because it was important to me. This is how the children speak, you know? So for us to think that our kids in the playgrounds or running around town aren't swearing or aren't using words or aren't talking about vaping and drinking and things like that, we have to open our eyes, because I'm around them every day. The thoughts in this book, the different aspects of the two main characters, aside from some of the other characters that are interjected throughout the story, are reality. You know, we might want to think that it's not a reality, but it might not be a reality for us right here, right now, in town, but it's a reality in the world. Not 12 months ago, we went through an incident of assault right here outside of this building that I was a big part of. My phone was ringing a few moments ago because my friend Chris was calling me. And that was not a race thing, but that was a special needs student, an adult. You know, I've known him since he was a young boy. So for us to try to glaze things over is... You know, we went through this last year. Maybe not for the same exact reasons, but it's under the same umbrella. And I applaud the fact... I wasn't gonna say this. I applaud the fact that our teachers are stepping up and taking on these conversations that should be had every day by all of us, not just in the classroom, but in real life every day, sitting at the coffee shop, walking down the street. And that's how we come together, is we conversely figure out how to fix it, not to say, "Get rid of it," and walk away. You know, I'm gonna stop there so I don't go too much further. But I appreciate the fact that everybody's... The people who are here tonight, there's a lot of you, a lot of emails that we've received in support of this book. So I appreciate your time and efforts in writing to us. Thank you.
I have literally one more thing.
What I forgot to turn that on.
What I forgot to say is that everyone who spoke tonight, regardless on how you might feel, it feels to me like did the town proud in the sense that it was a respectful presentation. It was a respectful dialogue. We probably didn't give Channel 7 much to show tonight. Sorry. So in any event, thank you all for the way you conducted yourselves.
And I'd just like to say thank you all for bringing your voices into the room. That's incredibly important, no matter what side you're on. I ask that you keep the conversation going, keep civil discourse going over this issue and any other issue. This is important for us to hear and for you to hear other... Just like we were asking the kids to do in class. So I thank you for bringing your voices into the room, but we need to move this meeting on. These young people have to get home. They have school tomorrow. So thank you all for participating. Items of interest to this conference?
Thank you very much, Chairman. All right, we're gonna start off. We have our annual, our regular student representatives report. We have a certificate of academic excellence and recognition. We have a presentation by Principal Collantonio and Principal Strauss. And then we have our bullying and harassment audit findings for this report. So try to move through this. Hopefully, we'll cooperate. Okay. All right. Oops. Must've misplaced that slide. There it is. So we have Nathan and Ollie. Take it away, please.
Hello, everyone. I hope everyone is having a nice night. Now, I'd like to take the time to highlight some of the amazing things that is happening at Danvers High School. So we're now into October. We had a great first month over in the high school. And one thing that I wanted to start off by highlighting was the DECA projects that are underway. DECA is a really big part of our school. We have an amazing program at the high school. We have amazing teachers for DECA. My project is starting up this month. It's called "Rake It In," and I'm raising money for the Danvers DECA program with two of my partners, Jack and Luke. And we had a lot of families and residents in Danvers sign up for this project. We're going and raking the leaves off of the yard. And all that money is going back to the Danvers DECA program. And then students can also sign up to get community service to do the raking. So we're using residents in Danvers and also the students in our school. The next thing, a lot of the students or all the students at our school had an assembly last week about the first 504 Film Festival video competition. So you're gonna create a video and fill the testimonial on the importance of 504 students with disabilities and the protection that they have in our school. And that's a really great thing that is happening. And then last weekend, we had our first senior and junior homecoming. It was really successful. It was held in our courtyard. The class officers did an amazing job DJing and good food.
The DHS marching band and color guard took first place in Melrose with a score of 77.81 and also took first place in North Reading with a score of 80.51. The first fan bus attended the marching band competition in North Reading this past Saturday. I didn't see them. I was on the field. And from now on, DHS will have a fan bus for cheerleading in November when their competitions start up. And DHS Concert Band, this year, we have started testing a new program for practicing and playing assignments called "Bake Music." We use that for... All of our concert band music is on there, and when we do playing assignments, it will... It will, like, mark every note if it's right or wrong. It's a little, like, weird with some parts, like any of the percussion parts that have multiple instruments. It will be a little weird until, like, for example, Mr. Daniels will go and, like, he can listen to them. So like, the score doesn't necessarily matter for those. But other than that, it's... So far, it's been going pretty well.
And then, I know this was mentioned before, but I just wanted to recognize the Unified Basketball Game that happened again last week. We had a record crowd of more than 800 people that attended. And the last... And there was 12 community partner organizations. It was a really good game. It was really fun. We had so many students there cheering. And I know how important it is to them. I'm in the Best Buddies Program. To show up and show our support for them. And it's something that they really value and really enjoy. And then, one last thing I just wanted to show was for the seniors, the college process that has begun. Some students have already signed up to play in college sports or... and others have already started signing up for early decision. Just wanted to say that it's been going really good at our school. Our guidance counselors have been so helpful, helping everything set up in our Common App and just all the assemblies that we've had. It's been so informative and really, really helpful over at the school. And yeah, that's all we have for you guys tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Excellent report, as always, and the fan bus, right? I know that was a big deal. Principal Strauss coordinated that to make sure that we got students to the performance, which is outstanding. And we'll continue that trend. So great report. Awesome.
I was at that Unified Basketball Game, and I'm sure they enjoyed it. But I gotta tell you, I enjoyed it, I think, more. That was a phenomenal event for everybody who was involved.
If I may, through the chair?
I understand you're raking leaves. Nice. Is there a link or a rate? Are raking leaves to raise money? Did I hear that correctly?
Yes. So are you having students?
Students can sign up in the Google Classroom to get community service for it. And then all the money that we raise from that, from the residents paying to have their lawns raked, goes back to the DECA chapter.
And how does a resident get students to rake?
That form...
It's a community service.
That form was taken out in our... By my two other partners, just around town. They just shared it with family and friends and other people. And we have 29 houses that have signed up, so.
You need a 30?
If you have more, please share it with Dr. Bauer.
I will.
We'll pass it around for you.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you so much. I did have my slides out of order, and I apologize. I'd like to call Principal Strauss up to present the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendent Certificate Award of Excellence and Recognition. Every year, the association puts together an award for all schools for a student that exemplifies outstanding performance in the classroom, but also in the community, well-rounded. So I'd like Principal Strauss to say a few words and introduce our winner.
So congratulations, Professor Josie. I was gonna keep it short. I know I have three minutes, but I'm kidding.
You have less than that.
I know that. But I think it's really important, after hearing comments over the last three or four weeks that has nothing to do with the book... I'm gonna start there. But really about who our students are. So I've had the pleasure of meeting Josie and spending some time and getting to really study who she is. And she represents everything that education's all about. And so I had the honor of writing her letter of recommendation, which is four pages long. I'm not gonna read that. But there is a couple of things in there that I would like this community to hear, because I think not only is she exceptional, but she also is an indication of what Danvers High School and Danvers Public Schools produces. So bear with me. Every year throughout my incredibly blessed career, there seems to be a plethora of students who have made their school better because they are wonderful people. And those fortunate enough to know them are confident they will be successful in whatever they choose. It's not often, however, that there comes along a student and a person who not only makes the school better, but the world better and us as educators and people better, while simultaneously being valedictorian, a superb athlete, a leader, a voice for the marginalized, and a gentle, humble soul. Josie Vogel embodies this extraordinary combination of attributes. She is one of those truly exceptional individuals who seamlessly integrate all the qualities we aspire to see in outstanding young adults. And I can say without hesitation, she is a generational student and human being, destined to make a profoundly positive impact on any campus fortunate enough to welcome her. This is how long it is. I was once asked what my biggest fear in education was, and after thinking for what seemed like an eternity, I thought of a quote from a principal to his staff on the first day of a new school year. What he says sums up my fear best, that as a whole, society in general and educators more specifically are too caught up with numbers, who is brilliant based upon a standardized test. And we forget the kind of people we need to bring this world to greater heights. And so he poignantly states we must look beyond the words and the need to fill resumes and look deeper into the character of someone before making an assessment as to their effectiveness as a role model and a future leader. He said, "I am the survivor of a concentration camp, and my eyes have witnessed what no man should ever see: gas chambers built by educated engineers, experiments that make a shutter done by brightest doctors, children tortured by intelligent nurses, and the elderly slaughtered by skilled and learned psychopaths. Therefore, I am suspicious of education and encourages all to seek out those students who are not only bright, but who have the kindest and most giving souls and let them lead us into a new world." Josie Vogel is that person. So I introduce to you the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents So I introduce to you the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents Award for Danvers High School, Josie Vogel.
Okay, we're gonna move into the next portion of the superintendent's update, and I'm gonna ask if Principal Collantoni and Principal Strauss can come up for the presentation. Just to frame the presentation, hopefully I'm in the right way. One of the areas that we've been looking at is the district, is what can we do in terms of our branding? And as we talked about in the last meeting, branding encompasses a lot of different areas. I think one of the big areas of branding not only is perception, but it's experience, whether it's good, bad, negative, positive, perceptions as well. And one of the areas that we wanted to take a look at is really looking at that transition to Danvers High School. It's talked about tonight, and I know it's been something that's been, we've been talking about since I arrived, and my, two years ago, now in my third year, and just really taking a dive into the data, but we know that there's a lot of work, and it's a bunch of pieces. So in the context of this, I think it goes back to some of the findings in the survey that we'll discuss, but I just wanna say thank you for bringing this. You did have a great discussion with our superintendent's advisory council. We talked about a lot of things. Some things might be a little uncomfortable, but that's okay. As we say, it's okay to be vulnerable in order to look to improve, because you have to put that out there, to know that maybe things aren't where they need to be, but believing that we fully have pieces in place, and how can we tie this together? So I'm gonna turn this over to Principal Collantoni, Principal Strauss. And you're gonna have to tell me when to turn the slides, okay?
Turn the slides.
Okay.
So, when I first started in July, one of the first things that I heard about in speaking with Adam was, he gave me a list of all the students who were not coming to Danvers High School. And my first initial question, I was always trained to ask the question, "Why? Let's dig deep into this." Adam was kind enough to put out a survey to families of students who were not coming back. It was late in the game, no question about it, but I think the work that he did really drove all of this, so he deserves the credit for it. I just asked a pretty simple question, and from it came some really interesting, eye-opening, thought-provoking data. So, we wanna present it, so.
And I don't want Alan to take all the credit. He shared a Google Form with me that he used in a previous district. So, I appreciated that partnership right away. It was a question Superintendent Bauer and I have had the last few years, why are our students, where are they going, and why? So, I was excited to jump right into our work right away as partners. Before we go to the next slide, just the other question, you know, we're gonna dig into this year as well, is students coming to middle school as well. You know, trying to be reflective about working with our elementary school students, so they are informed about the middle school that we offer up here. And so, I put this survey out in July. Danny, go to the next slide, Superintendent Bauer. And so, it about 82 students, I believe, on the list I sent to Alan. Again, as indicators, late in this game, but we still got some great responses. We got 23 responses. The slide represents the range of different places students are going this current year in ninth grade. We went from Essex Tech to St. John's Prep, to Bishop Fenwick, Moulton Catholic, St. Mary's Lynn, and Landmark School. So that's just a breakdown of the distribution on that slide. This was really our most important data. There were some multiple choices on the Google Form for families to choose from. They weren't limited to one particular choice. They could choose multiple options. But I'm gonna turn it over to Alan to kinda break this down a little bit.
So I think what's interesting is, and it's important for everybody in public, to understand, number one, no assumptions can be made, this is general. So when we talk about academic reasons, and as parents began to list, and they were also able to write responses, so it was not just a multiple choice, or, you know, circle, circle the best answer. One of the things that we found was the perception that there is not enough rigor. The question was not specifically asked, and we will change our question for next year, as to do they feel that there wasn't enough rigor in the high school, or did they feel that their child wasn't pushed enough in the middle school? That we don't have the answer to, and it is something that, as we talk for next year, when we will do this survey much earlier, that we will begin to delve into. But I do think it asks a very important question, as to how rigorous are we? What are we doing? What are we not doing, and what can we do better? Certainly, there are going to be students who are leaving, you know, the reality is, most students who go to the technical schools do not go into the trades. They go to colleges. And so therefore, what is it that Danvers High School doesn't have, or perceive not to have, that we need to market a little bit better? So it ties in in a lot of what Superintendent Bauer is doing in terms of, how do we begin to show the excellence that Josie, who's going, you know, she's applying to Harvard, and University of Virginia, and all of these magnificent schools? And Ali and Nathan, who are doing fantastic things, and so many of our students who are playing D2 and D3 athletics. The assumption that in order to play sports in college, you have to go to the prep is false. Having coached in Connecticut for years, in a very small school, we had kids going to Notre Dame and to UCLA, and it doesn't have to be the perception that people have. We just need to change that perception, is a lot of the information. We did, you know, certainly there will be people who had poor experiences in the middle school. There will be people who feel as if their children can get a religious education. We can't, those are very difficult to fight, and legacy is a difficult thing to go against. But what this did is it provided myself some information, and certainly I know it provided Adam some information.
And, you know, the other piece, just perspective, this is my 16th year as a middle school administrator, 12 as a principal. This is not a new conversation. At the end of middle school, families are looking for other experiences. I think what has changed now is just we're in the age of information. And the conversations we've had as well, just marketing sooner and better to highlight what we do in Danvers. New beginnings, you know, middle school can be a grind for families and students. Sometimes they truly do want a new beginning at the end of middle school. And so, a lot of these options up here, or that families chose, are not typical, are typical to middle school in general, after a middle school experience. So these are not unique from my perspective and experience working in a few different districts. Next slide. But what was really important to me, going into my third year here, was regardless of what you said about middle school experience, what can we be doing better at Colton Richmond? And so, as you can see from this slide, certainly families' experience at the middle school did drive their decision-making for some. And then when there was opportunity for open responses, we learned a lot more, you know, factors that went into that, that we could be reflective about, and do a better job here before they make that decision at the high school level.
So one of the things that we're talking about is what, you know, data's great, but unless you do something with it, it doesn't really make any difference. So what are we doing? As you all know, last spring, the high school held its first showcase, which I actually was lucky enough to come to, because I, you know, I had already been hired, I hadn't started yet, so it was an opportunity. And I was incredibly impressed with everything that was going on. The problem with it was, everybody had already made their decisions. So, the first conversation that I had was, we need to do this the day after, or two days after, the last open house of all of those schools, which we are doing. We are doing on, I actually think that slide's wrong, and it's November 19th, or is it the 18th? It's the 19th. Yes, it's the 19th. And we're taking the private school approach, which is, we are opening this up to fifth-grade parents, because we know that once they leave fifth grade to go into a middle school that is not Danvers, they are not coming back. It's the Hotel California. Once you check in, you never leave. And that's the advantage that prep and Fenwick and some other places have, is they now have middle school too. So they think everything's gonna be answered. So we're gonna do this both for fifth-grade parents, as well as for eighth-grade parents. And we are taking the approach, you're gonna start seeing lawn signs all over town, and we're using three words: inspire, empower, and soar. Soar being our Falcons, but soar is also support, opportunity, accountability, and rigor. And we're gonna drive much of what we do based upon inspire, empower, and soar. And one of the things that we're talking about, and some of this you're gonna hear in my SIP tonight, is that our goal by 2029 is that our students will be able to graduate with a Danvers High School diploma, an AP diploma, which some of you may know, or some of you may not, and we'll talk about it when I talk about SIPs, a seal by literacy, and potentially an associate's degree for our middle-of-the-road students. And we think that that would be phenomenal, as well as create more non-Chapter 74 pathways, probably Lead the Way. So we're looking to go globally, but we need to sell that. There are parents who have no idea what's happening in our high school, except what they read on particular Facebook pages. We need to change that narrative. It's very different now in high school. It's not, everybody just comes to Danvers High School or the community school. When you have choice, we need to show why we are the best choice. So, Adam's work was phenomenal for his school, and what they're looking at, phenomenal for us as well.
I heard this the other night, so I don't have any questions for you. I enjoy your presentation. I like the strategy, and I love inspire, empower, soar, so, let's do this.
Thank you for the presentation. I've always been a proponent of showing where our students are going. You know, I think that's super important, and we looked at the website, I think a couple of weeks ago, there in one of our sessions, and I'd love to see that stuff bubbled up.
So we're gonna have a scroll of where kids get in. So we just had a student get in early, very early, to Wake Forest, which is a big deal. So, we're gonna start scrolling where everybody goes, where athletes are getting into and playing, and are playing in some big-time schools, so that will certainly be a change.
I mean, that'll be great, like, where did last year's kids go, and then an early look into this year. I think that's fantastic. And wasn't, when Adam was here, I don't know if it was last year or the year before, was it like a card that was sent home, or? You know what I'm talking about. It was like a flyer that said, you know, "Look at where our students are going," or "Look at what we're doing." Because I think that's missed, you know? The data, it's tough to, I don't know how many students leave eighth grade, 22 or 23?
No, 82.
82, I know, but we only have like 20. Actually, it's a little bit lower. I'll talk about, but I think, if I may share, on the data point, we talked about this too, is like, you know, how much data is there? And this really is starting the discussion, the conversation, right? Because we haven't done this in a while, and knowing that, you know, we have choice data to go through and run the same survey, as Alan and Adam said, you know, do this survey a little bit earlier and add some more questions to it. So this is really just having the conversation and starting this, because we really haven't had this conversation.
The other piece that I did not mention, and I, to repeat, I said it the other night, I did some backdoor investigating over using all those schools, taking the top 10 of each of those schools over the last five years. So that would be 50 students per school, 250 students, okay? Of that, I wanted to know how many were potential Danvers High School students, and it's over 30%. So, if you bring half of those students back, that's a significant change. And there's no reason why. I mean, I see, you know, Josie's taken Harvard Multi-Viable Calc at Danvers High School. So, everything's possible. We just need to think a little differently.
And it was just a suggestion, if possible, how many students are coming back? You know, they don't go directly into eighth grade, but what does it look like, grades nine and 10 incoming? I think I saw that data before, but that's kind of it. Thank you for that, I appreciate.
When you say coming back...
Meaning how many students return to Danvers Public School?
We had five in the first month, who went to Zach and came back.
Exactly, exactly. And that's, I think that's important information as well, and why, you know, and surfacing that. I think that's important, just capturing the other side of the equation. So, thank you.
First of all, I love the strata of the diplomas. I think that's a brilliant idea. So much more opportunity for students who can and are willing to work for it. Love that idea, and what I see is sort of an organized marketing effort, if you wanna call it that. The idea is that we have a good story to tell. We really do, if you look at what our students have done, and where they've gone, and, you know, we've got a good story to tell, it's just we haven't really cracked the nut of how to tell it yet. And I'm feeling like you guys are on that path, so, carry on.
You can definitely tell that there's a lot of hard work behind this, and a lot of vision. Having gone to Danvers High School, I know that, I had friends that went to Fenwick, that went to the prep, that went to, at the time, it was in Beverly, but at the North Shore Tech, in Essex Aggie. There have always been those options, and there've always been people going. So, you know, it's like, like we've been talking about, it's trying to keep as many as possible, because we are gonna lose, for whatever reasons, that are, you know, most of them are listed here. You know, if your dad and grandfather both went to the prep, odds are you're going to the prep. You know, so, you know, for us to battle through that, we appreciate your efforts of trying to streamline and figure out where and why. So thank you so much for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, more to come in this area, for sure. Okay, we're gonna move on to our next piece, which we've asked our group, McAvoy, Joyce, and Kowalski, Attorney Nevens, and Attorney Joyce, to do an internal audit of our bullying, harassment, and discipline policies and the inner workings. Because one of the things, and this actually ties into branding and perceptions, is that, you know, what are we doing? Are we consistent? You know, have we calibrated? You know, are we following the policies and procedures appropriately? Because I think a big piece of this is building the trust. And one of the things I've heard since I've been in this district is that, you know, we've had bullying and harassment issues, and are we dealing with these appropriately? And we're working really hard as a team, so we felt as we've done a number of audits throughout our district, you know, this is one audit that we've been doing a lot of work, and Patrick is here now, and I don't know if, Patrick, thank you for being patient. We had a lot of public comment tonight, so I am your turner of the slides, so just tell me when, and we're gonna turn this over to you, Attorney Nevens.
Sure. Good evening, folks. Patrick Nevens, attorney with McAvoy, Joyce, and Kowalski, have the pleasure of serving Danvers Public Schools. Superintendent had reached out to us over the summer to do this audit, with a focus on looking at compliance with bullying, harassment, and discipline, both state and federal law. Superintendent, you can change to the next slide. So the audit consisted of a review of existing policies and procedures to make sure that they're up to date. Some areas of the law, particularly I'll use Title IX as an example, changes, feels like every year. So the goal here was to make sure that Danvers had the most updated policies and procedures to work from. Compliance starts there, right? You wanna make sure your administrators are following the right grievance procedures. We then looked at a review of sample cases. So administrators, principals, assistant principals, Title IX coordinator, provided us with a sample of cases, and we looked through them, trying to, you know, notice any trends or any issues. And then, over the summer, had the pleasure of interviewing 13 administrators, principals, assistant principals, Title IX coordinator, and some student service folks. Really just wanna highlight that, they were fantastic, very transparent, and I think that that really helped, you know? The findings and the recommendations really came from them being honest about what works, what doesn't work, and what they could use going forward, like training and materials and whatnot. Next slide. I won't go through all the findings, we do have an executive summary, and we do have the findings report. Encourage folks to read it, but I wanted to highlight just a few things. In regards to the bullying space, and really any space, bullying, harassment, safety planning was a strength of the district. Administrators were really good right at the outset of putting in safety measures and supportive measures for folks, and communicating information with the special ed department if a student was on IEP or 504 plan. One of the areas of growth for the school, you know, going forward, is looking at, I think this is, you know, in software, and what technology investments can be made of having a centralized repository of reports. So for example, there was a lack of information, say, when a student went from elementary school to middle school, and middle school to high school. So if they had had a history of, say, being targeted by a particular student, or groups of students, and they were in eighth grade and heading into the high school, high school wasn't necessarily, you know, if something had happened, say, in ninth grade, they didn't necessarily have the kind of centralized reports that they could go back and look at and see what the history was with those students. Some revised procedures that were able to put in place, updated the bullying plan and the policy, and we also created incident reporting forms and checklists. Administrator's day is very, very busy. What we wanted to do is create accessible checklist for them to be able to use, to make sure that they're in compliance with all the steps. Next slide. In the Title IX process, so looking at sexual harassment, strength in areas of growth, grievance process, and I say that because, again, the Title IX law has changed with the change in administration at the federal level. And so, we were able to provide a new updated Title IX manual, which has all the steps, template, forms, flow charts, so you can see exactly what needs to be done. The folks were upfront, that they felt like that this was really an area of need for training, particularly where the law changes so much. Next slide. And in non-Title IX civil rights, so that, you know, we'll be looking at protected classes on, you know, race, national origin, other, you know, protected classes, we were able to update and provide a new civil rights grievance procedures, which the district didn't have before, as well as... and they were in eighth grade and heading into the high school, high school wasn't necessarily, you know, if something had happened, say, in ninth grade, they didn't necessarily have the kind of centralized reports that they could go back and look at and see what the history was with those students. Some revised procedures that were able to put in place, updated the bullying plan and the policy. And we also created incident reporting forms and checklists. Administrator's day is very, very busy. What we wanted to do is create accessible checklist for them to be able to use to make sure that they're in compliance with all the steps. Next slide. In the Title IX process, so looking at sexual harassment, strength in areas of growth grievance process, and I say that because, again, the Title IX law has changed with the change in administration at the federal level. And so we were able to provide a new updated Title IX manual, which has all the steps, template, forms, flow charts, so you can see exactly what needs to be done. The folks were upfront that they felt like that this was really an area of need for training, particularly where the law changes so much. Next slide. And in non-Title IX civil rights, so that, you know, be looking at protected classes on, you know, race, national origin, other, you know, protected classes, we were able to update and provide a new civil rights grievance procedures, which the district didn't have before, as well as a new food and service program, civil rights policy and procedure. I highlight that. That comes out of the U.S. Department of Agriculture. Was something that they had been finding noncompliance with other districts, and so proactively we put that in place for Danvers. Next slide. We also took a look at discipline, and one of the feedbacks from administrators was wanting to be able to have flexibility in terms of individual circumstances, but having consistency when it came to discipline. So one of the recommendations is for the superintendent to organize a subcommittee to look at different school rules violations and what the potential responses and consequences could be for that. The idea there would be to be guidelines, right? Administrators always maintain discretion when it comes to the discipline, but to be consistent from one administrator to the next in the district to have these guidelines. Also, training on alternatives to discipline. So with the new, there was a amendment to Massachusetts law, section seventy-one, thirty-seven, H and three quarters, which is school discipline for school rules violations, was amended back in two thousand twenty-two, with an emphasis on trying to exhaust alternatives to discipline. There are exceptions. Administrators felt that they had used alternatives, but could use more training on skill sets on how to facilitate those alternatives, like mediation, conflict resolution, problem solving. And in terms of with special ed, for folks that are familiar, if a student's disciplined when a manifestation determination has to happen, and so making sure that coordinating with the special ed department, and we were able to provide a new checklist to make sure that folks in in a manifestation review are able to ask the right questions and be in compliance with the special ed law. That's a really high-level overview. I tried to stay within my timeframe here, but I will open it up to any questions.
I think we're good. Yeah, I'll just throw in some, thank you for doing this, by the way. And
Sure.
The one thing I would say is that I'm glad that Dr. Bauer and others have supported this, because frankly, bullying always sort of, it's percolating below the surface. And we hear a lot about it, and maybe it's quiet, but I think it's one of the things parents are very concerned about. And I think these recommendations have a chance to make things better. So, thank you.
Patrick, thank you for being here. And our administrative team tomorrow at three fifteen will have, Patrick will present this actually in more detail, the nuts and bolts as we work to implement the recommendations. Certainly, as we've discussed, you know, there are areas that, you know, we've done a good job with, but know there's areas of growth. And we're ready to embrace that to move forward. I will be posting the information for the public to see. I'll put that in my update so they can see this. But again, Patrick, thank you very much for your time.
Yeah, thanks for having me, and I hope everybody has a good night.
Thank you.
Take care. I think we're ready to move on to unfinished business? We're ready for our financial report.
I have actually a couple of slides this evening to help help move this along. So I wanted to do two things, kind of give a look back and a look forward. The FY twenty-five budget closeout had some challenges, things that I had alluded to over the course of the last year that were presenting us with some higher-than-budgeted expenditures that were being forecast. And so this slide is really just sort of a summary of some of the ways in which we did ultimately close the books on FY twenty-five. In the category of special ed transportation and out-of-district tuition, we did rely heavily on Circuit Breaker. About five million dollars total was spent on tuition out of Circuit Breaker, including eight hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars at closeout. About half of that at closeout was thanks to the supplemental budget increase or, you know, kind of making whole our Circuit Breaker reimbursement from last year. We did manage to maintain our goal of carrying forward a little over a million dollars in Circuit Breaker funds from this year, from FY twenty-five into FY twenty-six. So that will be available to us as well as the revenue that will come in this year. With the McKinny-Vento homeless transportation, again, we had some money that we knew was coming in from the state. Some of that is based on the FY twenty-four and a V A report, where they they do a reimbursement based on the expenditures that we reported having actually made in FY twenty-four. There's also a process through which we can claim a partial reimbursement for some of the foster care, specifically for foster students' transportation. And then realizing that districts were facing some, you know, immediate need, the state did accelerate the homeless transportation reimbursement process. So rather than wait until FY twenty-five report was submitted and have it audited and have that reimbursement money come in next June or July, they did expedite that process for some districts. And we reported to them almost in real time the expenditures so that they could do that reimbursement. So that's another three hundred thousand dollars that I was able to use at closeout towards those expenses. And then finally, we had some of those instructional assistant positions that were needed to address particular student needs. And we were able to meet those expenses with some combination of, you know, unspent money and some of the budget lines, but a lot of it was also the emergency assistant funds from the state. And then moving into FY twenty-six, I just wanted to provide kind of a highlight, really, of where we are with that. You know, our operations and transportation coordinator, David Pulsifer, has been working extremely hard to look at every aspect of transportation, to see what we can do to bring some of those costs down. We have begun utilizing the special ed contract for out-of-district, well, the contract for special ed out-of-district transportation through the consortium. And, you know, the data is kind of preliminary, because the year has just kind of started. We had, at the time I was planning this or preparing this, we only had really the August invoices of hard data. September was not quite closed. But it looks like we are conservatively hoping for a ten percent savings on that that line item. We did, as you also know, reduce the number of contracted buses from ten down to nine. That's a savings on the bus contract. We do have the expense of paying the driver, but that is a savings overall. We also have some maybe better oversight and processes for collecting the hundred and eighty-dollar bus fee and a clearer process for both our staff and for the families about what it, the process for obtaining financial assistance if you need a waiver. And and finally, David Pulsifer is also making sure that he is in close contact with the folks at DPW for any vehicle repairs and maintenance that needs to be done so that we can avoid needing to rent a bus or otherwise outsource some of our transportation needs for that reason. The out-of-district tuition, I would say, is, you know, I've been, obviously, year over year, there are going to be some increases. But right now, I feel the sense is that the in-district services are meeting more of the student needs. So we're having, I think, fewer outplacements to increase that financial projection. We did have some moderately bad news in the sense that the Circuit Breaker reimbursement for for the revenue that's coming in this year. If you recall, last year, the state kind of has a bucket of money that they budget for Circuit Breaker reimbursements based on the real expenditures that expenditures that we report to them from the previous year. They reimburse seventy-five percent of the tuition first, and then they take what's left over, and they reimburse as much of the transportation as possible. Last year, that reimbursement of the transportation was forty-four percent instead of seventy-five percent. And this year, it's sixty-one percent instead of seventy-five percent. So that calculation for us is a little over two hundred thousand dollars. And there will probably be the same sort of conversations with the state about whether, and the governor, about whether or not this can be made whole for the districts across the state. And then there was an sort of unexpected and unfortunate reduction in the amount of our IDEA federal grant. But we have been working in conjunction with our partners at DESI to find ways for the district to kind of make up as much of that funding as possible. The IA positions based on student needs, I would say that need, that challenge does continue this year. And part of that is that the needs of the students continue to increase. But it's also a reflection of us having our programs in the district and the staffing required to run those programs. You know, we're just making those adjustments. For substitutes, if you, if you haven't heard, our implementation of moving into a new accounting system for the town, that's been challenging. We have brought our substitute services into the district, like under our control, rather than contracting that out. It's been a lot of work over the summer and early fall, but I think it is bearing fruit in the sense that it's being successful in, we've hired a lot of substitutes, and we have good fill rates, and it is saving us money because we're not paying a contractor to do this work. And once we are fully implemented, I think it's going to be great. As far as capital investments, I just wanted to share that we are kind of ahead of where we usually are in terms of making our purchase of school vehicles with this year's warrant money. We already have our new bus for FY twenty-six, has been delivered and is operational. So that's fantastic. And we appreciate both David's efforts and those of DPW in helping to make that come to pass. And there was a sixty thousand dollar earmark for classroom technology that was part of the governor's supplemental budget. And we just got word today, actually, that the Executive Office of Education has put out that money in the form of a grant application. So Jim Sullivan, our tech director, will be writing that grant and identifying exactly what technology and which classrooms we'll be using that money for. As far as the more in-the-weeds part of the FY twenty-six budget, that's something I will continue to work on and come to you at a future date with some line transfers that will reflect the fact that we're not contracting out for substitutes. So we don't really need the money there, but we'll put it into our substitute lines where we'll actually pay our own employees as the substitutes. Do you have any questions about anything?
Any questions? Thank you, Pam.
All right. Thank you very much.
So one thing for the committee that we appreciate the opportunity, so Pam could present more of a detailed report. So look for any feedback in in the future for the for the next report, just to make sure it's pinpoint to any question you may have. Thank you, Pam, for your efforts, too. Thank you.
Okay. Next is the wellness policy. And your recommendation.
Yes, so we presented the, for a first reading last meeting, the wellness policy, there were adjustments made. Our wellness committee meets four times per year as mandated. And the big recommendation, and actually, in partnership with with actually the University of Massachusetts, was to just make some tweaks, not too many major changes, as we talked about last time. One of the big areas was just making sure that, you know, in terms of the nutrition program, that all items are purchased through the food service department, which is a little bit of a change. But that is something that is supported by our nurses because of allergies and being in line with that. Also, to clearly state that recess should not be taken away as a punishment, and looking for alternate means for any discipline, which our administrators are doing a great job with anyways, just solidifying that. And then also looking for ways that our staff can improve their own self-care. So those are the major pieces of that. So just looking for second reading and approval to move forward with this policy.
Do you want to hit that again, say? No, so moved.
Seconded.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Passes. All right. New business.
Sorry, I'm just manipulating through Zoom as well as on here, to share the screen. So next up is Assistant Superintendent Anderson, who will give an overview of our curriculum, instruction priorities, as well as assessment data overview. And she'll present in more detail the student data and the MCAS in our subcommittee meeting and a formal presentation in our November school committee meeting. So I'll work on this. Yeah, bring it right up. Good. Okay. Sorry, it's a little slow tonight.
It's just three slides to give you some sense of where we are curricularly. The first, if you can just flip to the next slide, Dr. Bauer. So. Oh, fancy, nice. So where we are in terms of the school year is giving our, what we call, pre-assessments. This is part of a general strategy to support all students' achievement and growth, which is called MTS-S, a multi-tiered system of support. Basically, we give screeners in reading, you can see DIBELS is there, socio-emotional and math, usually just those three. And then we are able to inform our instruction, meaning some students will get tier one, all students get tier one instruction, which is what happens in the classroom for all students. Some students need a little more support. They might get small group instruction, let's say, in reading with specialized leaders. And then finally, tier three instruction usually is done one-on-one with kids who need more intensive intervention. So we're just in the beginning of that MTS-S process for the year. Next slide, please. And just because the MCAS results came out and were made public, I just wanted to show you this. Generally, how MCAS is read is if you look at the district bar graphs, they're right next to the state bar graphs. So what you want to do is add the blue and the green. So that's the exceeding expectations and meeting expectations, and hope that Danvers, in this case, is above the state averages. So just in English Language Arts, that first slide, grades three through eight, you can see the district has three percent of the students exceeding expectations and thirty-three percent of the students meeting expectations. And the state is slightly higher than that. Seven percent are exceeding expectations, thirty-four percent meeting expectations. So usually add those two together. And you can see, as we look across mathematics, grades three through eight, about the same. The state's slightly higher than Danvers. Science and technology is a high point for Danvers. So you can see that Danvers, across the board, is higher than most other districts, but right around the state average. And then the next slide just shows the tenth grade. So this was a big question in everyone's mind, as you remember. Question two, the voters of Massachusetts said, we don't want MCAS to count for graduation requirement anymore. So the question was whether the results, kids would take it seriously. And there are reports all over the board, but you can see, again, the district is very close to the state in many cases. So we will look deeper at all of these results because, as I've mentioned before, we're pulling all of our assessments, MCAS, DIBELS, I Ready, IXL, into one big platform that helps us look across all students and what every single student needs so that we can deliver that in a timely fashion. And then the last slide is just our priorities moving forward. As I said, using data to inform educators of what each kid needs. Number two is to implement our comprehensive elementary reading program that has all the components of reading, phonemic awareness, phonics, reading fluency, reading comprehension, and vocabulary. Number three is to pilot test new elementary math programs. Very excited about that. Number four is to analyze our secondary math program. We use grades six through eleven, the Carnegie Math Program. I just recently met with the middle school math department, and they're excited to explore alternatives to that. Number five priority is to implement K to twelve, our new SEL curriculum, which is called Wayfinder. So we have a comprehensive implementation at elementary, and then at secondary, we have a pilot test. So we have a comprehensive implementation at elementary and then at secondary, we have a pilot test. And lastly, I've laid out that Danvers success is going to, one of the three things it's going to be based on is how well general education and special education work together. So that also includes English language instruction. So we want to make sure that that partnership is working seamlessly. So you'll hear much more about the data and you'll see beautiful graphs in November, but right now, any preliminary questions?
Not seeing any, Kristen. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. School improvement plans.
Awesome. Thank you for administrators who are here, very long day for them, if they can come forward to present. What we'd like to do, just like we did with the school handbooks, is present each level and then vote as a whole to accept the improvement plan. So if I can have, we'll start, I believe it's with the high school first, but if the administrators want to move forward, that'd be great. And I'll just see where the slides are. Just give me a second.
Yeah, elementary's first.
Right, elementary's first.
We're just testing.
Right.
So since you have three minutes and we have elementary, middle and high, so we get a minute each, all right? Are we clear on that?
All right.
Accepted.
Before they begin, though, our task really is alignment as much as we can with our district approval plan, which connects with our strategic plan, which I'll talk more about in our next meeting. So take it away, please.
Excellent. Thank you for having us this evening. The elementary goal, the elementary level has three goals. And goal one, we're continuing to work on our literacy work across pre-K through fifth grade. As Kristen mentioned, we're implementing the DIBELS assessment, making those initial groups. We started our MTSS system today across all five elementary schools. Our second goal, also already mentioned, is around adopting a new mathematics curriculum for implementation in the 26, 27 school year. We have over 43 teachers engaged in this work and we appreciate their efforts in working closely with our elementary math coach to implement different curriculums, collect feedback, using a rubric to really make an informed decision about our math work going forward.
And our final goal, similar to what the Assistant Superintendent said, was utilizing our Wayfinder curriculum to show growth in our socio-emotional competencies in our pre-K to five students, especially around self-awareness, adaptability, empathy, collaboration, agency or purpose. And that will be assessed using the Waypoint summative assessment and we'll have more to share in the spring on that.
Thank you. Questions?
Just felt it was very streamlined and sensible. Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Mar and I have been working on the middle school improvement plan. And what's exciting is Peter and his role between high school, middle school and working with Alan, really looking to streamline our goals as well. You know, our, one of our goals, as Kristen mentioned, we're, I met with our math department, they're very excited about digging really into our current program, Carnegie. They have a lot of excitement about piloting and looking at other programs, really trying to implement science ELA this year. Real focus on our standards-based alignment vertically in six to eight. I, really an exciting goal for us, along with that MTSS model, is we're really trying to lift up our tier two intervention for math and reading. Last year, our first year, we implemented Wind Block in sixth grade as a structure, which was a really great win for us. This year, we're looking at how and how we use that in a data-driven way. But also in the seventh, eighth grade, we're really targeting small groups and really trying to, that big bar graph of the students that are just on the bubble making, meeting grade level improvement, like we're trying to really target those students in small doses, quicker doses, to kind of figure out what might be the boost they need for our tier two intervention. If you want to talk about goal three.
Yeah, so goal three, by June 2026, our all-student achievement scores will improve on following measures in MCAS, DIBELS, I Ready and benchmark assessments. So as Kristen said earlier, we're really getting hitting the ground running, collecting all those initial benchmark assessments for this year. And I think our goal is to create consistency across all the grade levels. It's been great coordinating with the elementary teams in terms of the DIBELS assessment. And then in terms of IXL, we use that currently at the high school. So going to see if that can be another measure that we want to move between perhaps grade eight as well, since DIBELS goes to grade seven. And then additionally, as Adam mentioned earlier, we're excited about all the new curriculum implementation going on. There's a lot of moving parts. Adam and I have been out to some leader training for the new science curriculum, OpenSciEd, which really puts students at the center of their science investigations. And that's connected a lot to the work of applied learning that we're doing in the district as well. So a lot of great things that I think in the end, we will see dividends in terms of student achievement scores here. And then goal four, student engagement will increase as measured by the climate survey and other data points, including attendance, after-school participation and learning walks. So I think this is something that we're continuing to keep our eye on. Also, as referenced earlier, we have the new Wayfinder platform, which emphasizes all those different skills and competencies related to student engagement in the classroom. We have a pilot team at the middle school that's digging into the grade level curricula to start implementing those lessons at their grade level. So hopefully that's the gain, gains of student engagement in the classrooms as well.
You know, and the one piece of data that we were excited about is our absenteeism really has improved at the middle school last few years. So our kids are here, so now we really want to work on engagement, participation, student leadership and kind of calibrating our instructional practices across the school.
Any questions?
I got one. Just curious as to how long we've had the current science, ELA and math curriculum that we're using. It feels like it's been, of course, I'm old, and so days run together. I'm trying to think when the last time we changed it was.
So this is the first year for ELA and science. So both of those curriculum adoptions happened last year. So we're, this is the first year of implementation. As I'm onboarding, I'm supporting that, Adam's supporting that, Kristen's supporting that, Julie's supporting some of that. So it's definitely a full team approach. Math, we've been using Carnegie for about four or five years, I would say since 2020, 2021.
Okay.
So we're definitely at a point where we want to see, is this the right fit for us or do we want to look at alternatives?
All right. Thank you.
Our science department went for professional development a week ago. The whole department went for four days, which was great for them, challenging for us. But they went and had a tremendous experience learning about the new curriculum program to bring back.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. And two more things, though, at the middle school, just to bring in more, you know, alignment. We brought aboard a reading interventionist, which we were able to find creative ways within our budget to do so. And we also brought aboard a team chair, so to bring more connections, to ensure that all students get what they need. So great job with that. All right. High school, please.
So for the high school, school improvement plan goals, we have goal one. By June 2026, students will see an increase in student achievement scores on the following assessments. MCAS, AP exam scores, localized data and graduation outcomes. And goal number two, AP enrollment, number of students enrolled, the number of tests taken will increase 15% for June 2026 and 25% for students enrolled for 26, 27. AP qualifying scores of three or higher will increase by 5% and AP offerings will increase by at least three. I would say out of all these different measures up here, we're really having a concerted effort on our AP programming. I feel like we've built it up a lot over the years, having 22 offerings at the high school. We're looking to add two more offerings for next year. And we did make significant gains in our achievement from last year to this year. We went from 65% of students getting a three or higher to 73% of students getting a three or higher. I think we want to continue to see that grow, much to Alan's credit, too. I know this is a priority of his as we continue to push those students. And we really want to make that a shining light in our, our school to want others to want to come because of our AP programming.
You can finish your last question.
Yeah, I'm good. Goal number three, strengthen inclusive efforts that build relationships among family, school and community. I feel like we've already seen this at the beginning of the year with different community events. We've already advertised our open house, but this, continue to think about ways we're welcoming families and the community into our school so we can put out there the great things that are going on. We want to showcase that, not have that behind closed doors. We want people to see that and be excited about that, the students coming up here. And then lastly, goal four, student engagement will increase as measured in the climate survey. Similarly, consistent with the middle school goal as well, we want to see students engage in their classrooms and their classwork as we're doing learning walks and other measures too, such as attendance, that they want to be here and coming to school.
Like, that was, thank you very much. I'm very happy to see goal number three. That kind of stood out in the superintendent advisory committee, you were listening. I'm sure you've heard from other stakeholders as well. Thank you for including that.
Could I, the chair, just one last thing? So, you know, reviewing, and it was said tonight that we are looking for equity, equity. And equity means for all, getting what they need to be successful. And that's not at the expense of any one particular person or individual, which is critical. So we're looking at everything across all lenses to make sure that our students get what they need. And Alan and his team and Peter are really looking at advanced placement because studies show that if a student takes one advanced class at that level during their four years of high school experience, the chance for success and graduation and moving on further is greatly increased. Studies show that unequivocally. And I think that's important, looking at that, because this is about increasing rigor for all. So I want to applaud the high school for this piece here because it does connect with the alignment with the elementary, the work that's done there, through the middle to the high school. Thank you.
Yeah, you subsetted this. We would also include special education students taking it.
Okay. So we need to take a vote on this.
Correct.
So I would move that we approve the school improvement plans, K through 12, as presented.
I will second that.
Any discussion or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All votes? Thank you.
I actually need to move, ask Mr. DeMar, Mr. Strauss to come back for the competency determination. We're requesting the school committee make a first read on policy IKFE. The rest of the principals can leave. Thank you for your time. Appreciate it. Unless you want to go as a collective group.
So I believe this was already previewed during one of the subcommittee meetings. But we finalized our policy, so we have an update around that. So essentially, just a brief introduction, as you're aware, with the ballot measure change, we had to establish a local competency determination to ensure that all students are making local graduation requirements based on their success in our core academic areas. And so the, to show mastery, a student must successfully complete in accordance with district's grading policy, the final assessment for course or a capstone or portfolio project. And so we have the ability to determine which courses have fallen and what measures we're getting used to assess that they have met that goal. So the courses that they're required to complete, there are two years of ELA, ELA nine and ELA 10. The first two years of math, algebra and geometry, science, all students come in taking the biology and are still expected to take the biology MCAS, along with the other MCAS exams for state accountability purposes. And then need to take at least one more additional lab-based science. Then, starting with the class of 2027, all students will be additionally required to take one year of US history. Additional considerations that I wanted to note, so in terms of specialized instruction in our student groups, we want to make sure that we ensure that all students have the support they need to meet the competency determination that we're supporting them on their way to graduation requirements. So for example, students with disabilities, we include language to ensure that both in-district students and out-of-district students have equal opportunity to meet the competency determination. And I do know for students that do go out of district, that's an important distinction to, even though they're attending school elsewhere, still be able to graduate with a cohort of students at the Danvers High graduation. Similarly, for our English language learners, English learner student work is aligned with the standards and is assessed at their WEDA level to allow for access. And so this allows for multiple means of expression, for students to be able to demonstrate their understanding based on their WEDA level. Also, for late-enrolling students, we need to make sure that we account for students that may have attended a different school if they're transferring into our high school after their second, first or second year. Make sure we do a transcript review. This may involve them enrolling in courses to make sure they're meeting our competency determination here. Or if it's impossible for them to get all they need based on coursework and say they're a senior, MCAS can be used if the previous methods are not possible in terms of accepting equivalent courses or enrolling them a course in their schedule. We also do have an appeals process, which can be used by two groups of students. For current students who disagree with the competency determined decision, say if they, we say they do not meet a requirement by successfully completing a course and completing the final exam with capstone. And also, we've already had some parents reach out, students in the classes of 2003 through 2024 that did not earn a diploma and would like to now earn a diploma if the MCAS was there any barrier. We can do a review of their transcripts and see if they now meet the competency determination requirements plus our local requirements. We will be able to issue them a Danvers High diploma, which is exciting.
For clarity purposes, could you speak briefly on how this differs from what we require for, to meet graduation requirement?
Sure. Essentially, we're, we're codifying that students need to make, need to meet the requirements that the MCAS was requiring them to get through. All of, they have to get through all the courses that was being assessed by the MCAS. Whereas our local requirements are a little more general in that they just need four years of English, four years of science, four years of math, et cetera. So it's really essentialing that they meet that same met benchmark that was being determined by one test.
No, I appreciate that. I just didn't want people at home thinking, you just need two years of English to gra. I, I thank you for what you just said.
Of course. And I hope that makes sense.
And if I may, the chair?
Absolutely.
So the update to this policy, which last year, if you remember, we approved this general base policy looking for further recommendations from DESI. Those recommendations came out, so we made the adjustments based on looking at those two areas of satisfactorily completion of a course, but also the specific courses and then the appeals and then the other considerations. So this is updated based on DESI recommendations. So we're asking for an approval for a first read tonight with an opportunity for a second read that would be in November because by the 31st of December, we have to post, all districts across the Commonwealth have to have the updated competency determination. So we're right on track and we'll thank Peter and Kristen and Alan for the teamwork on this. So we need to take a vote.
I move that we approve the competency determination policy for first reading.
Second. Any discussion or questions? All right, hearing that. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. A vote. Passes. First reading. Moving on, next policy.
Yes, so a fall, a following up of our policy subcommittee. Policy JEB, which is the entrance age for school. I've had a few community members reach out to me that have situations where, you know, the children are born in a certain time and they're not eligible for kindergarten. And that, there is a DESI regulation in terms of readiness, in terms of where they're born. And it really is September 1st, you know, so they must be born before, on or before September 1st. And with that being said, our old policy, where our current policy states, just in the black in the second part. So for first grade, those students must be six years old on or before September 1st. So we discussed this in the policy subcommittee and we believe there should be some discrepancy for grade one. Because you very well could have somebody that, you know, would not meet the requirements for kindergarten. So that would require parents to send their child out to, you know, another school for kindergarten and then they would be in the same predicament for grade one. And we feel that if a child has the readiness and the skills required to be successful at grade one, then we should be able to be flexible, you know, with the discretion of the principal. And again, we work for consistency. It just makes sense that we adjust this and it's based on other policies throughout the state that allows that flexibility as long as there is the readiness for grade one that's demonstrated. We want to keep students in district because ultimately, if they, you know, if they were born on September 2nd, for example, right? They wouldn't qualify for kindergarten on that piece, so they'd have to go out. And therefore, the next year, they're still born on September 2nd, that doesn't change, so they wouldn't be able to come in grade one. So we feel that we should have that discretion, again, looking to keep students in district. And really, there was not a whole lot of discussion at the policy subcommittee. So I am asking, requesting a vote for a first reading for this policy.
Sean and I had the chance to, you know, we were basically the policy committee. So we looked at this and I think we were both very much in favor of the, the policy, but primarily the flexibility. Because there are students, you know, there, there, you want to have a system that has a cutoff, but you also want to recognize that a student born within a month of the cutoff might be perfectly ready. cutoff might be perfectly ready. So I can't speak for Sean, but I think we are very much in favor of this.
Yeah, it makes sense to me. It makes perfect sense. You can speak to me there, yeah.
Okay. So I would move that we approve the policy for first reading as presented.
Second. Any other discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Your goals are next.
Sorry, just juggling back and forth with Zoom, but we're getting there. Thanks for your patience, as always. Okay, for superintendent goals, I did align them with our strategic plan, and there are actually four components of our strategic plan. But I added a fifth goal, which I'll discuss, which is the implementation and follow-through of our strategic plan. So for goal one is student achievement, and that's really strengthening and aligning our pre-K-12 curriculum that aligns, is student-centered, responsive, designed to support all learners. And really, this is just supporting the work that is happening with all of our departments, right? And I think the big ones are number three. We have to increase expectations for student achievement, supporting the curriculum that is going through, the AP programming, the 1-8 programming, which is the project-based work, which we're going through, and then also special education programming in alignment with the curriculum. Those are the four big areas. The portion of the graduate, so we have the competencies across all the grades, which a lot of work was done on that. Now we really need to start drilling into, what does this look like at each of the levels? What does it mean to be a compassionate citizen, resilient problem solver, et cetera, et cetera, and how is that demonstrated? The wayfinder that was discussed earlier is a way to really help students find, and there's a lot of connections with this, so they have those soft skills to be effective. And then pathways, we need to strengthen them further because that's the ability for students to receive more detailed instruction through engineering, the medical pathway, environmental science, which are so important. And we need to have these discussions with grade six through eight and bring those up. And also professional development. So we're doing these things to increase student achievement. We need to provide professional development that allows teachers to receive the training that they need. Kristen has done a lot of work. Kristen Anderson has done a ton of work with improving and increasing professional development opportunities. The last bullet is increased distributional leadership in our schools. And we're really working hard, and Kristen developed the Teacher Leadership Institute this summer, looking for ways that we can provide opportunities for our teachers to have more leadership in our schools, whether they have a title or not. It's so important. Goal two is our professional practice goal. It's really structures and procedures to support the work that we're doing, so it's a high-quality learning environment for all students. Really, number one is our district protocols. They have to be aligned. Our handbooks align with current protocols. We have to, one thing, number two, is very important. Student technology device platform is a discussion that we need to have as a district. I know we were one of the earlier adopters of our one-to-one program with the Chromebook devices, and we're taking a real hard look into, is that the adequate technology needed to be successful to fulfill the portion of the graduate and what our students need and how our teachers are supported. The mental health team, which is now ongoing, Kristen's done that work. Dual enrollment, which we've talked about, which is the ability to receive college credit while you're in high school, and really look for ways that we can set ourselves apart from our competitors, where students can have these opportunities, not only one, to provide deeper learning, but also they can acquire credits that when they go to college, they can really utilize those credits to accelerate through their time or receive a minor. And it really, from a cost savings, it's a huge benefit for families. And then our safety, continue to refine our safety procedures and practices. And then District Three is really that, developing the community relationships. And this is an area that was a lot of talk at our, a lot of discussion at our superintendent's advisory council. And really, we need to continue and build more relationships among families and our school community. We have lots of great stakeholders, so we need to make sure that we're communicating appropriately, making sure that families know who to contact with questions and receive timely responses, increase not only just our newsletters and websites, but really dive into, like, what do parents really need, and create some focus groups and talk with parents. We talked about branding. How can we look to increase and improve the brand of our district? And that really, developing an action plan is a key area of that. And then continuation of our superintendent advisory council, which really dives back into ways that we can look at, how is our district perceive the experiences, and what can we do to improve? How can we keep students here, keep them in want-to-be here? And also, we do need to involve, I need to involve more students in discussions. I think that's a piece that is the next level of looking for more outreach. And next is really the one under more policy and operational structures. So our student services programming is improved, but we still need to refine that further. We need to really look at the continuum of services, make sure that pathways really strengthen to increase parents' confidence in providing services for students across all grades. We also are looking at really for the customer service on our end, you know, updating our district protocols and having a safe place where people can find what they need. We've talked a lot about that as a central office team, so that way, when new employees come in, they have a great experience. But also those that are involved in current employees, they know where to go for whatever they need. The other thing is, though, Kristen's going to lead this, is creating a unified school handbook, pre-K to 12, which that in itself will be more of a refined. We have three handbooks that do align, but this is going to really drill down deeper, I think, and really make it easier for families to navigate our school policies. There'll be individual differences in some areas, but the alignment's going to be really important. Hiring and onboarding, we need to improve that. It's, as you know, we want to bring in the best possible staff that we can, but we also need to make sure that, you know, that process is as good as it can be. So our people are really digging in, looking closely at those policies and procedures. We need to really look at our facilities and our multi-year facilities plan. So we're going to look to create a team to develop a facilities plan, and that's really an important piece of our strategic plan because, as we know, the buildings are in great shape, but we need to look, be looking five, 10, 15 years down the road at what we need to plan appropriately for financial needs. And align our budgeting and operations really to strategic goals. You'll hear more about this with transportation, specifically in areas that we're looking to save, and how can we utilize our budgeting operations to improve student services and our personnel. Transition to digital systems, we're expanding to Munis, which is now, we're almost fully implemented. So that's just looking for ways that we can house all the data in one place to make it easier for our staff, for accountability, and outreach to families as well. So, and number five is really the implementation and follow-through of the strategic plan. And again, I will report out mid-year as well as end of year, you know, where the strategic plan is, and look at how we need to adjust any specific action plans for the next year as long as they align at our pillars. Again, as that relates to our district improvement plans and school improvement plans. And then really give some, I'd like to get some feedback from our stakeholders in terms of their perceptions of improvements we've made and areas that we need to continue improving. So it's five goals, and I just wanted to share those with you. I'll provide updates throughout the year. But I do want to point out that they're aligned with our strategic plan. And, you know, again, this is aligned with the work that's happening at the district level as well as diving into school improvement. We're trying to create more alignment, be more efficient.
Thank you. Any questions?
No, I like the depth of what you've put on your own plate this year. So it would be a bit of, it'll be a bit of a challenge, but I feel like you have a plan and you know where you want to go. So, excellent.
May I, through the chair? I appreciate that. And, you know, we're doing, as a central cabinet, as our leaders, you know, really, you know, I'm looking for ways to get obstacles out of the way. And that's our mantra, is how can we help, we have to, we have to improve student achievement. We have to. But we also have to make sure that we're supporting our great educators that work really, really hard. And also administrators do too. So we have to be very, we need to be moving forward here in this. So, thank you.
Moving on to the enrollment report.
Okay, coming up. Bear with me. Okay. So the October 1 enrollment report, I just want to give Janet Engraham, our executive assistant, a lot of credit because she spearheads the work to make sure that we publish our October 1 report to the state, the accuracy that's required, and she pulls it together. So I just want to say thank you, Janet, for your work on this. And I did a little bit of a dive, and I can do more of a dive into this. And I just wanted to say that, just our areas of interest, you know, I just did some quick high-level things that are, high school enrollment's actually up 13 students. I know, you know, we would like it to be more, but it is up 13. Our retention, you know, is lower in some areas of students not attending in five years. That shows true. Our retention is steady from fifth to sixth grade. We have our homeschooling numbers that are the lower, the numbers are lower than they were at this time last year. The district enrollment overall as a whole is down 102 students, and the elementary's down 105. And I can say that some of this may be attributed to students that were attending through the emergency assistance program, have exited the district. And then the choice program, students that are leaving as well as students coming in, that data is actually being tabulated. That comes off the October 1 report. So we don't quite have all that data ready for you, and I'll present that more in November. So if I just look at the overall whole data, where we're at, just, I did, we did a five-year comparison of our total enrollment. The numbers in red were the high numbers over this period of time, and you can certainly see, you know, we've declined, and I pointed out the number in terms of that decline from 2023. But if you look at it, you can see that the numbers may reflect some of the students that have exited out. But I think we're improving in some of the areas too. You can see, though, we have dropped the numbers at the middle school from 770 down to 734, and we bumped, we're closer to the number in 2021, at 790, and that number was 800 in 2021. And then we just did a one-year breakdown, the total enrollment, we're down 102. K through five is down 105. Holden Richmond down 10, and the high schools up 13. But if you do a five-year breakdown of that piece, the enrollment, the K-5, Holden Richmond, and the DHS over that period of time. And then the retention one is the most important one that I really looked at, the grade five to six at the bottom. You can see that we're holding steady. You know, we lost 17 students this year at the middle transition 12. I can give percentages of students available because that might tell more of a story. And then you can see at the high school, I gave a wrong number at the superintendent's advisor council, a wayden wrong number. It's actually 56. But I can give a percentage number off of that as well. And I just wanted to show you the enrollment changes at the elementary level. Out of the 105, you can see that there were more students out of Highlands and certainly Smith. Although at Smith, we've added quite a few through the consolidation of our special education programming. But students in the emergency assistance program, 114 have exited the district, a higher number at the elementary versus the secondary.
Can you clarify that on the emergency students? Is that reflected in the number above, or those additional?
No, it's reflected in the number above, yeah. It's not additional.
Okay.
Yep. And then we looked at the homeschooling just over time. I was curious to see where that number is. In terms of the number of students, we're holding steady, and you can see the breakdown with the families. And the trend is typically, you know, I don't really know when students may return back from homeschooling or when they go out. We really haven't dove in to those data points. And then we do have the choice op numbers, which we had from last year's, and it says tabulating because we haven't received those numbers yet from the state. As we record our choice numbers, they record choice numbers coming in. And you can see that, you know, there was a peak. Again, this is cumulative. This doesn't mean 43 students are going out. They are going out cumulatively, but then the next year, you know, five more are added in 2021. And that's how that works. Typically, the students don't come back, but we're going to do some data on that and some surveys in that particular area. So that is a high-level enrollment, and certainly happy to share this on the website as well. And this is the October 1 data that we sent, is all public schools required. Private schools are not required too, but they do, which is important because they also balance the enrollment, and it can impact locally. So I don't know if the committee has any questions on the enrollment.
All set? I think we're all set. Thank you. Order of business. Minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve and release the minutes from the August 11th and September 8th, 2025 regular meetings, and approve but not release the minutes of the September 8th, 2025 executive session.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
I'll abstain if it wasn't there.
Consent agenda?
Move the consent agenda.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any communications? Anything from legislation?
Yes. Sally sent me, Sally Currents, representative, sent me a relatively lengthy report. I'll try and go through it quickly. She talked about the fact that the House is taking up the cell phone restriction issue. I told her what we had in place, so she's aware of that. She said they're also looking at charter school funding again, and what the formula would be. And all eyes are on DC because of the shutdown and fallout to local districts. The U.S. Department of Education ended 106 million in K-12 grants that were designated for Massachusetts schools, including for student mental health services, tutoring, and school security. And I think at the moment, they're not sure. It does not look like the state could begin to make up all of the lost federal funds. Let's see. She said she was grateful to Damaris High students, Jessalie Pepe, I think it is, and Evelyn Hebert for joining them at the North Shore Boston Health Expo at Essex Tech on Saturday, September 27. They helped with several elements of the day, and she just wanted to thank them for what they did. All right. I guess that's it. That's the legislation.
Thank you. Anything else?
A human rights and inclusion committee. Want to congratulate Johann Hunter, who took Paul off the hook by becoming chair of the committee. But Paul did an excellent job during his leadership. So we thank you too, Paul.
And Paul's here?
Yes.
Thank you, Paul.
If I may, Chair, we had the safety committee, which was actually, a lot of areas we've improved with informaCast, the communication system. Also, we have improved exterior security cameras at the elementary. We've added a few more and upgraded our system. Additionally, we're discussing ways we can improve further safety procedures and protocols, so it was a really productive meeting.
We've heard from Paul and see earlier. That's about it. Nothing else, correct? Our next meeting will be November 3, and this meeting is adjourned.
Need to take a vote?
Yep.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.